I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for May the 5th, 2015. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Kennett, excuse me, Petty?
Here.
Kennett, Schottmar?
Here.
Latour?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh?
Here.
Kenyon?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. First thing we have tonight on city council meeting presentations, reports, and discussion items, the quarterly financial report for first quarter 2015 by Paul Becker, Chief Financial Officer. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One thing I thought I would do before I start this talk, you probably wonder why I'm pretty brief with the financial reports. Essentially, we set the financial plan when we discuss the budget. So, I talk in relation to where we expected to be and those expectations based on the plan in the budget. So unless I see some major deviations or major problems in comparison to that budget, I don't go in depth, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Right now, the general fund, the general fund's doing very well so far in the first quarter. Revenues are up roughly 6% compared to last year and compared to expectations. So that's a, that's a good sign and expenditures are about in line with our expectations. Street funds, street fund revenues are pretty flat compared to next year revenues are, excuse me, revenues are pretty flat compared to last year on expectations and the expenditures are about in line what we projected. Parks development is up. Those are the HMR, Hotel Motel Restaurant Taxes. They're up pretty strongly so far in about the 8% range this year and that's good because if you remember, we're embarking on the regional park and we have committed major resources to the regional park and do have some things we'd like to complete in phase one if at all possible that we discuss with you. Water and sewers revenue is up about 3% now, actually 3.6%. 3% is due to a rate increase, so the usage is pretty flat. Again, our expectation of expenses are roughly where we expected to be and we do have a pretty aggressive capital plan going on right now in water and sewer. However, we do in fact have the funds in reserve to complete that plan. Recycling and trash, the revenue's up in a 4% range. We had about a 2% increase in revenue. Again, we've got a pretty strong capital program going on there, looking at the long-range plan and also on the expansion for the facility itself. Now, the airport revenue's a little soft compared to what we had expected, but that again is due to, as we recall, the flight school and the issues we had with the flight school leaving. However, the expenditures are down roughly in proportion, so we're about where I would expect to be. So even though our revenues are a little less or a little softer than I had expected at this point in time, our expenditures are down a lot of that due to fuel sales, et cetera. So that's roughly where we are right now. I think everything's pretty well in line with what we expected. Revenue is a little higher, especially in the general fund. So that's a good thing and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What question do we have, Paul? Yes, John?
Yes, John?
Paul, tell me, in taking consideration, every fee or dollar or penny that we bring in, from taxes, sales taxes, property taxes, user fees, fines, everything we bring in from the public, how many dollars do we receive in one budget year?
How many dollars we receive in one budget?
What's the total amount of our budget?
Fully?
What we bring in?
Roughly 120, roughly 120 million dollars in total, everything.
120 million?
Roughly.
120?
Roughly.
Okay. And would that include grants coming in from federal?
Yes.
Sources? That's everything?
Mm-hmm.
120. Okay. And we spend roughly that in a year?
Well, it depends. If we have bond issues, we can go over that. For example, we still have some outstanding bond issues that we done, that we did. That revenue was generated, we collected in one year, and our expenditures are not in sync with that. So we're still spending down bond money for the street program. We're still spending money from the parking fund in that project. So they're not quite in sync. Sometimes we are going into reserves, but those reserves were either generated previously due to more revenue or less expenditures than we had expected or bond issues. The biggest gap between them are outstanding bond issues.
You bring up a good issue. What was our reserve balance at the end of April?
At the end of April, our reserve balance in the general fund? Okay?
How many reserve balances do we have? Do we have one for the general fund? Do we have one for each fund?
Most funds have a reserve in them, correct.
Okay. So if you added up all the reserve balances that we have in all the funds, how much money would we have?
Well, let me think a minute.
Roughly. It doesn't have to be anything.
Because I normally, I normally don't do it that way. I would suspect about 40 million.
Okay. So we have a pretty good cushion?
I'm aware of that neighborhood. Pardon?
We have a pretty good cushion.
Yes, we do. Now, remember, when we talk about fund balances, in certain funds, they're restricted for only the purposes they're there. Our general, that's why I normally center on the general fund, which has a fund balance currently of about 13 million dollars. Roughly, 5 million of that is not required for reserves and things of that nature or 60-day money, things of that nature. Remember that when I reported to you and we discussed salary increases, I projected at the end of the year, I figured we would have about 4.5 million dollars in the general fund reserves and those, of course, are reserves we can allocate to other places.
Which bank do we do business with?
Which bank do we do business with? We do business with several banks. Our primary, our primary deposit bank is Harvest. We have several accounts with Harvest. We also have banking arrangements with the Bank of Fayetteville. Our investment funds are with, with Simmons and so we deal with several, several different banks. First, for security also, we have accounts with.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Next order of business we have, thank you, Paul. Next order of business we have tonight is consent agenda. Number one, approval of the April 21st, 2015 city council minutes. Number two, resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the community development block grant agreement for 2015 when received in the amount of, received in the amount of $574,209 and approve the 2015 action plan. Number three, a resolution to amend resolution number 191-14 concerning the purchase of two International 7300 dump trucks with Henderson belly flouts from Summit Truck Group of Lowell, Arkansas for use by the Transportation Division. Number four, resolution to authorize the purchase of one Bobcat Toolcat utility vehicle from Williams Tractor of Fayetteville in the amount of $51,763 plus any applicable taxes pursuant to a national joint powers alliance cooperative purchasing agreement for use by the Parks and Recreation Department. Number five, a resolution to authorize the purchase of a great all XL 3104 four-by-two excavator truck from Scott Equipment of Springdale, Arkansas in the amount of $313,324 pursuant to a national joint powers alliance cooperative purchasing agreement for use by the Transportation Services Department. Number six, a resolution to award bid number 15-22 and to authorize the purchase of three Freightliner dump trucks from Truck Centers of Arkansas in the total amount of $368,232 for use by the Water and Sewer Operations Division and the Transportation Services Department and to approve a budget adjustment. Number seven, a resolution to award bid number 15-29 to authorize the purchase of old asphalt concrete from Hutchins Construction for a unit price of $105 per tonne as needed through the end of 2015. Number eight, resolution to amend resolution number 05-15 concerning the Transportation Division's overlay sidewalk projects listed for 2015. Number nine, a resolution to approve task order number two with Garver LLC for design work bidding services, construction phase services, materials testing, and closeout services associated with airport terminal apron rehabilitation project in amount not to exceed $73,000 and to approve budget adjustment. Number 10, a resolution to authorize application for an Arkansas Department of Aeronautics 9010 grant in, in an amount up to $500,000 for the rehabilitation of the airport terminal parking apron with the final amount contingent on the actual cost of the project based on competitive bidding. Number 11, a resolution to approve performance bond of Bright Investments LLC to guarantee construction of required sidewalk improvements along Armstrong Avenue by the end of 2017.
We accept the consent agenda as read?
We have a motion as second to accept consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Under unfinished business, number one, an ordinance to amend 33.329 eligibility of citizen volunteers to serve on city boards, commissions, and committees to remove the restriction on the number of consecutive terms a citizen may serve. I will entertain a motion to go to the third and final reading.
Come in.
We have motion, second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend section 33.329 eligibility of citizen volunteers to serve on city boards, commissions, and committees to remove the restriction on the number of consecutive terms a citizen may serve.
Alan?
Well, I don't have anything new on this. I'll repeat what I've discussed at the last meetings. I just feel like we have an arbitrary rule on the city council. As a governing body that's elected in the city of Fayetteville, we can choose from whatever the pool of applicants is that we want to appoint to our boards and commissions and it does seem arbitrary to limit ourselves in accepting qualified applicants and telling others that we may not want to engage them on that level by saying, no, we won't take your application. So I think that the city of Fayetteville should change that limitation and be able to accept those applications.
Okay. What discussion? John?
I like the idea of free exchange of ideas. I like the idea of fresh blood on these committees. I don't want these committees to be dominated by people who are professional committee members and that's what I fear lifting this restriction will do. I want everyone to have, to be able to participate, not just a select few. So I don't want to remove those restrictions that make it difficult for newcomers to get onto those committees. By removing these restrictions, we're limiting our thought processes, we're limiting the free exchange of ideas, we're limiting fresh blood, to put it more bluntly. So I'd encourage each one of my aldermen and women to leave this in place. Prior city councils saw the wisdom in restricting participation by some people to make room for all people. And I'm not suggesting that anyone with a particular ideology, conservative, liberal, whatever, we should choose by. We should have a broad range of ideas and thinking. If we restrict it or if we make it more difficult for general populations to get onto these committees, we'll tend to be limiting those free exchange of ideas. So I'd like to see those restrictions stay. Serving two terms is plenty of time to influence policy, to influence the committee's dealings. So let's leave it like it is and I think it's serving us well.
Well, the comments, we have the council on this. Yes, Stella?
Well, I've served as chair and on the committee for a good number of years and I really cannot think of any time when it created a huge problem. I think that whenever a person does have to stay out their, their term, it gives them an opportunity to look at some other committees and some other groups that they can serve with and learn their, learn their city even better. And so I would like to see it stay as it is. I think that it, I like a lot of different folks to get to serve and, and this way they, they have a chance rather than keeping the same people in the position for a long period of time.
Mark and then Sarah.
I'm currently the chairman of the nominating committee and the senior member of that committee and this was tough for me because I don't like restrictions, but this is a little bit different than an elected position because it's an appointed position. Four individuals of the city council appoint individuals to our committees, our councils, and our commissions. By having this restriction in place, it does prevent cronyism and it does allow individuals the opportunity to have new ideas come forth in the long-term activity of some very powerful committees. The individual that takes a term off can still serve, as Adela said, in other positions and a lot of times they're bringing their experience that they have in, from a previous committee to a new committee in order to make that committee re-energized or to bring in some ideas that are compatible across the committees. We always have a very large number of applicants for our committees. Many more people are engaged in our city than most any city that I'm aware of. And so I feel like that out of respect for the large number of applicants, the reputation that we have for community engagement here in the city of Fayetteville, I do like the restriction. If it were an elected position, I would probably not support it, but this is an appointed position and so it's very easy just to reappoint and reappoint because on the, the counterbalance, someone that is very experienced can offer input that is very valuable because we do have some complex situations in some of our committees. But I was thinking about this, just because that individual is not a voting member of that committee does not mean they don't have a sphere of influence. It doesn't mean that they don't have the opportunity to still attend a committee and offer their point of view based on their experience. And it, by having this turnover, we're building a larger community of, of experience throughout the community that is very engaged, very experienced, very knowledgeable, and we depend on this type of knowledge to advise the city council many times when we move forward. So it was not an easy decision for me to make because I, I like that freedom, but at the same time, with the arguments that I've just presented, I think that it is valuable to have a restriction. An individual can take time off a term and then reapply and come back. It's not like you're out forever. So I think I cannot support the change and I'm, I've been very, you know, I've tried to put a good perspective on this and take a lot of, I called individuals, for instance, that may have been impacted by this and I think that I got a pretty broad understanding that individuals that thought they might want to be reappointed sometimes said, you know, the break was good and they got other experiences. Conversely, there were some individuals that did say that they wish they could continue to join. So I am not going to support the change at this time.
Okay, Sarah?
Well, Mark actually made quite a few of the points that I was going to make, but I'll just add that, you know, we're limiting people to two terms. These are four-year terms, so that's eight years on a board and committee. I think that's a good, long time for someone to serve. And also, you know, we have almost 75,000 residents of this community and so, you know, we have a huge pool of applicants to choose from and I know, you know, last time we did interviews, we were there for, there till 10:30 at night interviewing people. So, you know, I think it's good to have a broad, diverse group of people to pull the ideas from and to keep it fresh and have new perspectives on that community. So I'm not going to support the change. I just don't see a compelling enough reason to make the change.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for some public comment and everybody, remember, you get one turn to microphone. Keep your remarks addressed to the chair of the committee, which would be me. Don't engage council member one another. Be polite. No hooping, hollering, carrying on, that kind of stuff. Okay? So anyone like to address us on this issue? Okay. Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. Is there any other final comments from the council? Oh, sorry. Yes, ma'am, please.
Well, I paused for a moment because I thought others might want to go first. But my name is Lorraine O'Neil. I live in Maple Manor Apartments in, just off of Weddington, 80, 3001 West Weddington Drive. And I'm, I was curious, I haven't, you know, been following this that thoroughly, but I, I did raise the question in my mind as to why this was necessary. Had the pool shrunk? But I think that's been answered by the council members here because I found myself thinking, yes, I can see both sides of it. I can see where it would be advantageous to have someone serve for an extended period because they've gained valuable experience and insight. But I agree with John and Ms. Gray, Mr. Kenyon. I think this should stay in place because we have a lot of very active citizens in Fayetteville and I think limiting the opportunities that they might have would be a very great mistake. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anyone else like to address us?
My name's Chef. I live at 920 North Levert Avenue and I didn't know much about this issue either and I was a little upset for a minute because I thought this was referring to elected positions. And, you know, what's the point of having elections if there are limits? But I do agree with Mr. Latour and Mr. Kenyon and them on this that this way more people will be allowed to serve on committees and serve our city. I, I think that the restriction actually serves a purpose and it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, anybody else? Okay. We'll bring it back to the council. Any final comments from the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Petty?
No.
Schottmar?
No.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
No.
Okay. Thank you all. Number two, an ordinance to amend 72.03 parking prohibited in certain places of the Fayetteville Code by enacting a new subsection to prohibit parking on a city street in front of and blocking a mailbox.
Mr. Mayor, before we actually go and go and do the third reading, we had a suggestion at the last council member meeting by Alderman Petty to slightly modify this. I left on the table in front of each one of you what he would propose as a change. The change basically is just a change in the penalty provision. It would lower the penalty down to what it is for over-parking, $15, instead of leaving where it originally was with the other prohibited places, which would be $70. So that was what we talked about at the agenda session and so I prepared that for you and I think probably before we read the ordinance, we ought to have at least a potential amendment to see if this is the way the city council wants to go and then if so, then I can, I can actually read it as amended.
Is there a motion to?
A move?
Second.
A motion, second to support the amendment. Now, what discussion do we have on the amendment first? Yeah, sure.
I support the amendment. I think it's a great idea, but I'm not sure I like the whole procedure. I'm not sure there's a real big problem in this area. I'd like to see individuals work it out among themselves and apply postal regulations to protect the integrity of postal delivery.
Okay.
But I support the amendment.
Okay. Yes.
I, I like the amendment. I, I feel a lot more comfortable about it because I was really uncomfortable with the high fee on the last one. You know, the initial fee, I believe it was seven, how much was it?
Seventy dollars.
$70 and that's more than a day's wages for a minimum wage worker. That's a stiff penalty and they're, you know, service workers are the people who are more likely to have their cars in neighborhoods at these eight to five hours, as well as leveraging such a stiff penalty when we don't have signage or prohibitive curb markings at each incident. So I think this is a nice way of, of handling it that is a much more, you know, it, it takes care of the problem without leveraging what could be a catastrophic fine for low-income workers.
Okay. Any other comments for a good public comment? Yes, Alan?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the amendment from Alderman Petty. It was a good idea. As I said, when I brought this ordinance forward, I was willing to discuss changes and open to them and hopefully that we as a council could make it better. So I appreciate that.
Yes, Adele?
I'd like to say that I have heard from my, my particular post person this week and he was very supportive and told me he would, he certainly would be pulling for this amendment to pass tonight. So I think we've heard from our, our police department saying that they feel like that it would be helpful if they had an ordinance or something so that they could tell people when they call, there is an ordinance in place. And so I just, I feel like, I feel like it's a, something that we're doing for our post people as well as for our policemen and I just think it's a very important thing and I live with $15 if it keep, you know, I feel like that's a little bit slight, but I also agree with Sarah and what she said and, and if we're not going to put in there that we will give some warnings and I, I think we decided not to do that and that's certainly understandable. So I think that this is a good ordinance and I'm, I'm happy that we're going to do this in our city where people, many people thought it already was a city ordinance. So I'm delighted to see us bringing this forward.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to take some public comments. Same rules apply. One turn to microphone, address the chair. Introduce yourself. Who'd like to be first on this?
And this is only about the amendment down to $15?
This is only, I think you said, this is only the amendment. Then we'll vote on the ordinance as a whole. Okay. I'll bring it back to the council. What other discussion do we have from the council on the amendment? Anything? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance now before the city council is as follows. An ordinance to enact section 72.19, parking blocking a mailbox prohibited. Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city councils, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas are hereby enact section 72.19, parking blocking a mailbox prohibited as shown below. Subsection A, on a city street in front of and blocking mailbox from 8:00 AM until 5:00 PM Monday through Saturday. This prohibition of parking shall not be applicable or enforced on any day that the U.S. Postal Service does not deliver mail such as all federal holidays. In subsection B, the penalty for a violation of the section shall be set forth in section 72.99B, which is the over-parking section.
Okay. Alan, you have anything you want to add to that?
There's nothing to add. I think, I think we've pretty much covered this in the last two readings.
Okay. Does the council have any questions or anything? Yeah, sure.
I appreciate the support for the amendment. I'm leaning towards supporting the ordinance as a whole, but I'm still not convinced, so I had a couple of questions. My first one was, we've got another item on the agenda, it's the next item that allows a traffic superintendent to paint curbs or erect signs to indicate a no parking zone. The language says where necessary. So my question was, if this ordinance didn't pass, would the traffic superintendent be allowed to create a no parking zone next to a mailbox?
signs or curb markings where the city council has already said-
Yep.
-it's not supposed to have the parking there. In other words, we can't, the tar- traffic superintendent cannot bring it upon himself, uh, just to, uh, have in front of all mailboxes a no parking zone unless the city council has approved it. Now, the traffic superintendent can designate certain streets sometimes, uh, for particular reasons as no parking areas, uh, but he can't just unilaterally say throughout the city now, no parking in front of mailboxes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, another question, maybe I should explain myself a little before I ask it. Uh, I feel like we have to, you know, as lawmakers, have, um, a notion of subsidiarity with our laws. You know, there are certain problems that are federal in nature. They have to be handled at a federal level. Some have to be handled at a state level or a local level, and some have to be handled at a neighborhood level between neighbors. And the letters that we've received on this, which have all been in support of the ordinance, have gone so far as to say every incident up to this point has been addressed among us neighbors. And it makes me wonder if that just can't continue to happen that way. Um, so, my question is, uh, you know, I would talk at the last meeting about having a three-strike rule and decided that wasn't a good way to write the law, but I know that that's under the purview of the administration when they choose how to enforce it. I'd like to know if there's been any conversations about including a three-strike rule i- in the enforcement policy.
Chief? Yes, there is.
I, I think to answer your question, no, we haven't had any specific conversations about, uh, how we would enforce this. Like you've heard me talk about before, we try not to limit an officer's discretion. We leave each, at least ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we leave each, uh, traffic offense ticket arrest after that particular officer at the time based on the circumstances. Uh, I think I can tell you with, with, uh, pretty much certainty that, uh, an officer is gonna give a lot of warnings in this situation. I don't think their first, uh, reaction's gonna be to write a ticket.
Okay, thank you.
We discussed this on Monday, and the, the officer will have the discretion on whether they think they need to write it, ri- ride away or, or not. So, I don't think we're just gonna grab a ticket book and start writing a bunch of tickets.
Mm-hmm. Well, I appreciate the explanation, and, you know, I have a great deal of trust for the administration and for the police department when they tell us something. And, um, you know, I understand that if you've got somebody that's just belligerent about it, that's one thing. If you've got somebody that's made an honest mistake, that's another. And so, based on the explanation, I'm comfortable supporting it.
Okay.
I have one other comment, Mayor. In, in reading this, uh, I stayed too close to the original ordinance, so I think I need to add a clause right at the start of subsection A that says persons may not park his or her vehicle on a city street, instead of just beginning it with on a city street. I pulled that too quickly off the other one. Uh, the other ordinance had a preference, or had an introductory phrase, and so, uh, it really doesn't make very good grammatical sense the way I have written it. And so, rather than trying to attack it later, I would rather correct that problem now.
Okay. So, we won't need another amendment to change the wording to on a city street instead of-
No.
No.
And we began with persons may not park his or her vehicle, and then go on to on a city street in front of and blocking mailbox.
Okay.
So moved. Second?
All right. Any discussion on that? Any public discussion on that? Okay.
Normally, I like to write in, in actual complete sentences, so I apologize for presenting one that's not a very good sentence.
That's fine. All right. There's not any other discussion. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Now, back to the original ordinance. Um, what public comment do we have on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Peter Tonison, thirty-five hundred Hearthstone Drive. I was just listening to what Mr. Petty said, which is an interesting point, that federal government really runs the post office, and they have the supremacy clause on their side, and they haven't ruled on this. The state hasn't ruled on it. The county hasn't ruled on it. So, now we're down to the cities ruling on it. And I was just wondering if it's, if there's not gonna be signage, and I understand the expense of that, and there's not gonna be painted lines, um, who gets to decide where the mailbox goes? Because in my neighborhood, some of the mailboxes are at the edge of the property line. Mine, and this is a, again, just a personal thing, my mailbox, whoever built the house put it right next to the driveway and painted it black. So, I had to put reflectors on it so I don't back over it backing out of the driveway at night. But, I mean, if I like that neighbor, and I do, because he takes my trash out when I'm not here Sunday night, and I don't like that neighbor, and he's got two teenage sons who parked their car in front of my property, what is the city, is the city gonna do anything to say that the homeowner can't move his mailbox from that edge of his property over to that one just to hurt his neighbor? I mean, there's no restriction, and again, I don't really care what you do in this. It's not a moral issue. It's not gonna change my vote. I like you all. The discussion is good. But who gets to decide where the mailbox goes? Because really, this is a nuisance. The first time I thought, I thought, the first time I heard the chief speak, he wasn't that eager to get the police involved in this. Um, but I don't wanna speak for the chief. He's here. But who is gonna decide where the mailbox goes, if anyone? And what are you gonna do when people start moving their mailboxes to act out whatever aggression they may have towards a neighbor?
Well, I think the federal, I, is, I don't really know how to answer that, Peter. I, I don't know who decides where we move mailboxes.
I'm not aware, uh, maybe Mark is, but I'm not aware of regulations on that.
In our neighborhood, where it's a historic neighborhood, and there was a lot of discussion on this with the post office because there was a, um, a notice that all the post office boxes had to be moved from the doors out to the-
Okay.
-street. But really, whenever we contacted the postmaster, that was not a federal regulation. So, it is not regulated to that degree.
Okay.
So, that's what I know from our experience in our neighborhood. Uh, you can still go door to door, or you can have it anywhere along your property on the street.
Interesting.
Now, I think that there are other instances where neighborhoods are putting in, you know, the neighborhood boxes because that's the preference of the, uh, postal service. But while I'm, while I'm speaking, I, what I see the intent of this is, it's, it's, the, um, the intent is to prevent a person from continually blocking a mailbox. And there are individuals that depend on the service of the U.S. Postal Service for their income checks, if they're on a fixed income, and maybe they're getting a, uh, check delivered to them. Uh, there's a, more and more people that depend on the U.S. Postal Service for, uh, their pharmaceutical deliveries and their medical supplies to be delivered through the U.S. Postal Service. And so, out of regards for these type of instances, I think this is why it's quite all right to support this, uh, because it does give us the opportunity to say you can't block a mailbox. Because the post, the, the post, the postal delivery person doesn't, is not required to, uh, do fancy gymnastics to get into a mailbox to deliver the, uh, packages. So, the intent here is not the placement, the intent here is not, uh, respect for neighbors. I, in a, in an ideal world, we would all respect each other, but there's a lot of times that we don't live in an ideal world. So, as we get higher density, for instance, in my area or areas downtown, and parking is more critical, then there's more incidents of blocked mailboxes. Uh, so, I, I will support this, uh, because I do think that there is the need for some individuals to get a delivery of important, uh, items that are sent through the U.S. Postal Service, and they should have the opportunity to have those delivered as, uh, they're expected to be delivered. So, that's why I'm supporting this.
Okay. Let me take a public comment here. Um, is there anybody else? That's a good point. I don't know if I ac- exactly have an answer for you, Peter, on that. I really don't. I don't know who decides where my, mailboxes are moved. I know that if my mailbox is blocked, I simply just don't get my mail.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I spoke once before, but that was on a separate issue. Uh, I, I have listened to this, and, and it, it isn't clear in my mind, but it sounds to me like this is a single neighborhood. And it's almost taking on the perspective of Hatfield's and McCoy's type of issue. I think this is a singular neighborhood problem, and I'm concerned about the potential litigation that the city could face if they don't respond appropriately. That one neighbor is going to take this to the next level and say, "Well, I called the police and they didn't respond, so I'm gonna sue the city." So, that's my main concern about this, and I don't know what the potential for that is. But I think this is a neighborhood that has some serious problems, and they have some issues that they themselves need to work out. I can appreciate the problems that, that could exist in a situation like this, where you cannot receive your medication or your magazines or whatever it is that you're anticipating receiving in the mail. But I can appreciate the intent of the ordinance, but I'm concerned about the city's liability in this regard. Thank you.
Now, I do believe that the chief did speak to us a week or two ago. The city had about twenty. Chief, is that correct? And that's all over the city, correct? Or is that, okay?
Your, your recollection's correct. When I run the numbers, we'd had twenty in the past year. However, I didn't specifically look at-
As they were from a particular-
-where they were at. Uh, my guess would be most of them's probably on the west side of town, but that's just strictly a guess, is all that is.
Chief, what did you do to rectify that? What did you do when you got that complaint?
Uh, typically, we do a couple of things. We, uh, first of all, our dispatchers will tell them there's nothing illegal against that. There's nothing we can do. If they still insist on an officer, then typically an officer will tell the complaint, and sorry, there's nothing we can do about that.
All right. Thank you.
Just don't have anything in place.
Hi. Laura Phillips, two zero five five South Klein. I actually had this situation come up this last weekend. Um, my college neighbors across the street were moving, and there were like thirty cars on my narrow one-way street with dead ends, kind of at the end. And they were parked in front of my post office, uh, my, my mailbox and my driveway, my neighbor's mailbox and drive, my, my across-the-street neighbor's mailbox and driveway. And we were blocked in, and I had to go do stuff. And I went and politely asked them, and they said, "There's no law," and then had some other choice words. So, I mean, it, it was an inconvenience. I didn't have, I didn't call the police because I remembered this and had a good chuckle over it. But, I mean, they were moving out. But if, if they continued and if they were gonna stay there and have these massive parties and park in front of my mailbox, it was gonna be an issue. So, I don't think it's really an isolated case. I don't think it's just one neighborhood. Um, I mean, you see it happen. If you go to, you know, birthday parties, there's people parking there, and you can't get to the stuff you need. So, it is something to be aware of.
Okay. Thank you all. Who else like to address us on this?
Hunter Hampton, nine twenty North Leverett Avenue. Um, I do know that where we live, if someone did happen to block our mailbox and we weren't able to get to it for four days, we wouldn't actually be able to pay our rent because we are on a fixed income from the government. Um, I think that having some way to regulate this, having some way to tell someone, "Hey, something's going on. We have no way to do anything about it," I think I would have to support this because that does give us an avenue to go through to say, "Hey, you know, we have nothing to do. Can you come out here and fix this for us 'cause they're not listening?"
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'm gonna bring it back to the council. John?
I'm all for people not parking and blocking mailboxes and driveways. I think if someone blocks your driveway, you have some redress. If it's, it's almost false imprisonment if you can't leave with your vehicle.
It actually is already against our code.
Exactly, exactly. So, this is a separate issue, blocking driveways and blocking mailboxes. Most birthday parties or most college parties take place at night, after five o'clock, not between eight and five. So, I don't think this is going to remedy that much at all. There's just something about, you know, there's an axiom in law that says ignorance of the law is no excuse. We're not painting sign, we're not painting the curbs, we're not painting up signs. I'm afraid people are gonna get caught by this, and they have no way of knowing that they shouldn't do it. I mean, if it's repetitive and they park there for a month, certainly they know they're being impolite or discourteous or maybe even criminal. Uh, and, and those are extreme cases. I'm just concerned about the everyday person who might pull up, run into a house for five minutes, and come out and park in front of a mailbox. Uh, and maybe it's a time of day where the males already run, or it's not gonna run. I mean, we're, we're protecting a lot, and we're putting people at risk of, of fines and run-ins with the law with not much notice, and that concerns me greatly. I think we're taking a big risk for a little benefit.
Okay. Adele?
I'd like to speak to a couple of issues. Um, you know, I'm all about education, and I think that this is a, well, a chance that we have to educate our public on the fact that we now have an ordinance. We have a, a law. And, um, so, there won't be any reason for folks to, um, just ignore the fact that there's a mailbox there. Um, and, and I do appreciate what the chief has said about the, uh, warning notices. And I think our policemen will be, um, generous in providing those warning notices to people, uh, but not, not thirty in a row, of course. Um, the other thing that, um, I, I, I know that it's not just on the west side of town, and of course, that's where the complaints have come to Mr. Long, who brought this, um, forward. And another very important thing that we keep talking about neighbors working this out, I believe some of the folks that complained to him said they had tried to work it out with their neighbors. And if they had an ordinance to show to that neighbor, it would be helpful. So, I'll be very supportive of this. I, um, as I said, my postman told me he was supportive of it, and I'm on the other side of town from Mr. Long. So, it is not, it is not just on the west side of town, and it's not just in the university area. I felt like it wa- um, I felt like when this first came up, it was gonna be primarily students needing a place to park in a hurry and just, you know, ignoring that mailbox. And, you know, that's sort of understandable. But it's all, it's all over town. So, I think that it's, um, that we have a need. I think other cities around us. I've had some, some folks from Bentonville talk to me, and they said they already had a, a law up there. So, I, I think this is very important. It's something that we need to do for our postmen, our policemen, as well as for our citizens. And, you know, to, to say that it's not a very big deal, you know, it's kinda like, if it's not happening to you, it's not a big deal. But if you are someone who really needs to get your me- mail for many reasons, and you could be needing it for money, for medication, to hear from your grandson, or whatever. Uh, so, it is important, and I think that we need to, to pass this, uh, this ordinance so that we have a way to protect our citizens. Thank you.
Who else? Anybody? All right. There's no other further comments. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Are we on the third reading?
Yes, we've alr- we've already read it, the third.
Yeah. We're ready to do our thing here.
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Now, moving along to new business. Number one, an ordinance to amend seventy-two point three-four parking signs on curb markings required of the federal code, authorize the traffic superintendent to erect signs, paint curbs indicating a no parking zone where necessary. Kip?
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Fayetteville Arkansas, section one, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville Arkansas hereby repeal section seventy-two point three-four of the federal code in its entirety- Section seventy-two point three-four of the Fayetteville Code in its entirety and enacts a replacement Section seventy-two point three-four as shown below. Section seventy-two point three-four parking signs or curb markings authorized. Whenever the Fayetteville Code imposes a parking time limit, or prohibits, or limits parking, or stopping on any street or part of the street, the traffic superintendent shall be authorized where necessary to erect signs or to paint curb markings on such street or part of the street, giving notice thereof.
Jeremy.
The administration brought this item forward after discussion with the council around the previous item that was just discussed, and is recommending the City Council pass this proposed ordinance to authorize the traffic superintendent to use his or her best judgment about where no or limited parking or stopping signs and markings should be placed. The current, out-of-date Remnant City Code that we have states that whenever a provision of this chapter, the parking signs and curb markings required prohibits parking on a street, it shall be the duty of the traffic superintendent to erect appropriate signs or paint appropriate curb markings on those streets and giving- giving notice thereof. Um, the cost of the paint and the signs, if you can imagine every stop sign in the city, having a stop bar, a stop sign, a- every parking spot in the city being, um, painted, every fire hydrant notification. Most of those are actually painted already, but every, um, no parking, every mailbox, uh, to be painted would place quite a bit of financial impact on the city. Um, and particularly regularly repainting all those annually and conducting that activity could be significant in both staff time and paint supplies. So this particular ordinance would simply allow the, um, traffic superintendent to use his or her best judgment in order to paint those markings. Um, they work regularly with the fire department, and particularly in problem areas, would work with our city engineer as well to paint those in areas where they're needed. So staff is recommending this particular ordinance amendment be passed, particularly in context with the discussion we just had.
Okay. What questions we got? Alright. What public comment do we have on this? Okay. What's the wishes of the council? John.
Who is performing those functions currently? Anybody?
The traffic superintendent makes the judgment call currently about curb markings. And so every year, you all approve a contract with, um, a company that goes about the city doing paint markings. So all of our lines are repainted. Parallel parking spots are handled by the parking division. Our fire department identifies fire hydrants that need to be painted, where the curbs need to be painted, or the actual fire hydrant itself. So it's a number of different departments that work on this currently.
So we're empowering someone else now to perform those same functions that other departments are already performing?
The traffic superintendent ultimately has control over any of the street markings under the current code.
Who is our traffic superintendent?
That's Terry Gully currently.
He's in fact... You want to talk to Terry?
Terry Gully. Currently, without this new ordinance, you're- you're empowered right now to go out and see an area that needs some painting and paint it if you feel it's necessary?
Well, most of, I mean, most of what we do now, we have our, a contract each year. We do about forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of paint marking, which replaces all the line markings on the streets. We do not go around and paint currently so many feet from a intersection or near stop signs. I think this is mostly brought up just to try and correct the ability to do so if needed. It was not to plan on adding a lot to it because I don't have that in my budget. Uh, we would have to address that if the need were to arise.
Thank you.
Mark. It's my understanding this is a remedy. Uh, because if we do not correct what we have in our language, it could be that the city would be required to go to every place. Am I correct, Kit?
No, it's correct.
And paint every one of these places. And so, uh, this is simply a correction and a remedy. This is not some, uh, new fangled idea to confuse and... I mean, it's- it's- it's simple, and this is what we've, it's a remedy and it's a correction. And we find these in our code occasionally.
Okay. Anybody else? What public comment do we have on this?
Well, based on, because even before, my name is Lorraine O'Neil. I'm at three thousand and one West Winton. And based on what, uh, the traffic superintendent said, the thought had been rolling around in my head, but even before he said it, how will this impact the budget of the City of Fayetteville? Now, he's got a limited budget, and y'all just said that this was something new. So that means that he's going to have to ask for more money so that he can perform this task. And how widespread is it, and how will it impact the budget of the city, namely, the citizens? Thank you.
Well, it's my understanding that if this passes, that he would decide where they would go. It wouldn't necessarily be an impact if he decides that we don't need them in certain places.
In fact, I think it'll actually keep the budget from having to be improved or increased uh, because of the fact that this empowers the traffic superintendent to use his discretion and good judgment and not be required to paint up the entire town at a much higher cost.
In other words, we would have to paint everything, but if this passes, we wouldn't.
The mailbox that we just talked about?
Yes, yes.
That could be very impactful on the budget.
Well, not if this passes. It wouldn't. It wouldn't be.
Okay.
Okay? Alright. Thank you. Yes, Emma. Peter.
Peter Tonason. Mr. Mayor, is, so this is kind of directed to the notice issue for the mailboxes? Is that what this ordinance amendment is?
No, from what I understand in the code, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, right now with this particular ordinance that just passed, we would have to paint the curbs around a certain distance, and we would have to, or put up signage.
This is for a troubled mailbox, maybe where the chief has had three warnings and a ticket issued. And so he calls up the traffic superintendent and says, "We have problems around this mailbox. So we're gonna, I- I'd like some signage to try to avoid trouble in the future."
That, yeah.
Alright, again, I'm just playing devil's advocate, having grown up in New York. But can someone, can a homeowner have this painted in front of his house at his request so that when he gets home at four-thirty, he's always got a parking space? Can a homeowner park in front of his own mailbox when he gets home and finds the mail's been delivered? Or does it prohibit him from parking because since he's happy that he's parking there, he's not going to complain?
Okay.
We- we still have public comment going on?
Yeah. I wanted to get your ex- what your thoughts are on that. What other public comment do we have on this? Okay, I'm going right back to the council. Kit?
Uh, this actually will just prevent, uh, the city from having to go around and paint a whole bunch of curbs. Right now, this ordinance that's being replaced, uh, is a throwback to the old government, uh, when we had the Board of Directors, which had not only legislative power, but executive power, with the city management form of government. And, uh, when we, uh, when I was asked to draft an ordinance, uh, by Alderman Long on this, I did look through the parking, uh, chapter and saw this in there and went, "This is something that if we don't change it, is going to require a tremendous amount of money and no judgment by the traffic superintendent to do a whole bunch of painting, many places where it would not ever be needed, where because there's no problem, because the mailboxes are not so close together that there's a parking problem." And so when I called this to the attention of the mayor, uh, he said, I think very appropriately, "We need to get this fixed." And so Jeremy has now presented, uh, what we propose to fix it, to basically rely upon the common sense and good judgment of the traffic superintendent to only paint or sign the places that really need it.
Yes, John.
I trust Terry Gully. But I don't know who's going to take his place when he retires. Suppose the next traffic superintendent isn't so fair-minded, and he decides it's in his discretion to paint in front of my business so my customers don't have a place to park. Or he paints in front of my house, then I don't have a place to park. I'd like to see some language limiting the discretion of the parking superintendent. Showing, just language saying he has to justify from a traffic flow perspective. Or from a, you know, parking management perspective, not just a political perspective, or a business competitive perspective.
Well, what amendment would you like to add in there, John?
Well, let's just... The John Latour amendments don't usually go very far, so this may be just an exercise in futility.
No, I wouldn't say that.
But, uh, let- let me just appeal to the- to the Board of Aldermen and Women here. I mean, if so, you wouldn't want to be put in a position where somebody could come paint in front of your business and say, "Well, nobody can park there." I mean, let's just amend it to say that the parking superintendent has to justify it from a parking or traffic flow perspective.
Yes, Mark.
This is not giving the superintendent the authority to haphazardly go out and mark non-parking zones. This is saying if there is a area that is zoned non-parking, he has the authority to either paint it or not paint it. That's all this is doing.
If that's all this is saying, I can support it.
That's all it's saying. That's all it's saying. That's exactly what it's saying. If you just look at what's here, it has to be that the code already has imposed a parking time limit or prohibited or limited parking before any signs or painting can be imposed by the traffic superintendent. He can't go out willy-nilly and decide just to start painting up the city.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Alan.
So just to clarify a little bit, this isn't really just about mailboxes. When- when I went to Kit's office to talk about the mailbox ordinance, we started looking at all the other areas in the city that are not painted. Um, you can go down many streets and you can drive up to a stop sign. And thirty feet from a stop sign, according to our current ordinance, should be painted. They're not painted in the City of Fayetteville. All curbs are not. And so when we read that together, we realized that the City of Fayetteville was not in compliance. And quite frankly, doesn't- doesn't have the budget to be in compliance. So in my opinion, this corrects that situation.
Yes, John.
An ordinance to amend seventy-two dot thirty-four parking signs or curb markings required of the Fayetteville Code to authorize the traffic superintendent to erect signs or paint curbs indicating a no parking zone where necessary. Nothing limits to already prohibited parking areas.
Uh, let me make sure that you understand what an ordinance does. That's the title of the ordinance, giving the general theme of the ordinance. But the operative section is the actual code section under Section One. And the code section, which is what the traffic superintendent will have to operate under, and that's his entire true authority, states that whenever the Fayetteville Code imposes a parking time limit or prohibits, or limits parking, or stopping on any street or part of street, the traffic superintendent shall be authorized where necessary to erect signs or paint curb markings on such street or part of street, giving notice thereof. That is the only thing that actually is operative in this whole ordinance. The title just is a summary, kind of, of what you're, where you're going, but it doesn't state, it's not the law. The law is the code section that I just read. And as you see that, it talks about whenever the code says there's no parking, then the traffic superintendent shall be authorized to paint or curb, uh, curbs or erect signs. It's not totally within his discretion. You all first have to outlaw the parking, prohibit the parking, or limit the parking before the traffic superintendent could do anything.
Yes.
I'm very happy to hear that, and I'm very happy to hear it put on the record that that's what we believe about this ordinance. Now, it's in the record. That's the law. I like it.
Okay. Did I get any more public comment, or did I bring it back?
I think you brought it back.
I think I did. What final comments does the council have?
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading.
I guess we're not to the final comments, are we, Sarah?
No.
Alright. We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer? Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section seventy-two point three-four parking signs or curb markings required of the Fayetteville Code to authorize the traffic superintendent to erect signs or paint curb, uh, paint curbs indicating a no parking zone where necessary.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
An ordinance to amend Section seventy-two point three-four parking signs or curb markings required of the Fayetteville Code to authorize the traffic superintendent to erect signs or paint curbs indicating a no parking zone where necessary.
What final comments do we have from the council? Everybody good? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, an ordinance approving VAC fifteen dash fifty-zero-one submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at forty-three oh-one and forty-three thirty-one North Waterside Court to vacate and- and assess easement.
Whereas the City Council has the authority under ACA fourteen fifty-four one oh-four to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes. And whereas the City Council has determined that the following described portion of the access easement is not required for corporate purposes, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandon the following access easement described in Exhibit B attached here to and made apart hereof. And Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk, along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A, shall be filed in the office of the Recorder of the County and recorded in the deed records of the county.
Jeremy.
This property consists of two lots within the Timberlake Office Park subdivision. Um, they are currently undeveloped and contain about one acre. Um, there's a planned development on the site, which will cover both lots. And in the middle of those two lots is an existing access easement. The request here is to simply vacate that access easement. There are no utilities or any other, um, impediments to vacation. Funding commission voted nine to zero in its consent agenda, and staff is recommending approval of this vacation request.
What questions we have, Jeremy? Anybody? Okay. What public comment do we have on this? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and move to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC fifteen dash five zero zero-one submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at forty-three oh-one and forty-three thirty-one North Waterside Court to vacate and access easement.
Alright.
I'm over going to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC fifteen dash five thousand one submitted by Bates and Associates for property located at forty-three oh-one and forty-three thirty-one North Waterside Court to vacate and access easement.
What final comments do we have in the council on this? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the row?
Patty?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Okay, number three, an ordinance amending one sixteen point zero-two door-to-door solicitation of private residents D four of the Fayetteville Code in order to provide an improved and expedited background check process for applicants and to declare an emergency. Kit?
Whereas the City of Fayetteville requires permits and the Arkansas State Police background checks for all door-to-door solicitors operating within the city limits. And whereas the current background check process can take an inordinate amount of time to receive results and is not nationally comprehensive. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amend Section one sixteen point oh-two D four of the Fayetteville Code by repealing the existing language and replacing it with the following subsections four and five that an applicant must apply to the city as part of the permit process. Subsection four, a statewide criminal background check and a nationwide crime index background check, including sex offender registry, which shows that a peddler or solicitor has not, within the preceding five years, been convicted of any felonies or any misdemeanors been convicted of any felonies or any misdemeanors involving theft, sexual offense, or violence, nor has been incarcerated in prison at any time during the last five years. No person shall be issued a permit as a peddler or solicitor that has been convicted of any offenses set out above nor imprisoned during the last five years. Subsection five. For international students or other persons without United States citizenship and working with a valid visa or other government-issued identification, a copy of the visa or other valid documentation and a nationwide crime index background check meeting the criteria in subsection four above shall be submitted. Section two, emergency clause. Now, the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, here, uh, in an effort to expand the criminal background check for door-to-door solicitors nationwide and better ensure protection and safety of Fayetteville citizens, hereby declares that this ordinance, being necessary to preserve the public welfare and safety, must be immediately effective, and therefore declares an emergency exists so that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from the date of its passage and approval.
Chairman.
In twenty thirteen, after significant public, uh, interaction with council members, the council passed an ordinance, um, sponsored by Alderman Tenet that created an annual permit process for door-to-door solicitors. Uh, this ordinance requires a principal permit for the business or company performing solicitation of a service or product, um, as product sales. And each individual person acting as a door-to-door solicitor must also register with the city. They provide a background check, identification, I think it's a five-dollar fee, um, to check that identification and other documentation. Both the Chamber of Commerce and the city were contacted last summer and again this spring um, by local businesses concerned in their attempts to obtain a solicitation permit in a time-efficient manner. Many employ as door-to-door solicitors are college-age students working during summer months. And a quick turnaround is important, both for the employer and the potential employee. Um, staff saw three potential issues that we're proposing to change with this ordinance amendment. Um, I'd like to enumerate those for you. First of all, it takes about two to three weeks for the Arkansas State Police to turn around, process a background check, um, back to an applicant. Alternatively, we have local companies within Fayetteville that can do the same formal background check within a twenty-four-hour period, utilizing the exact same database. However, they process that through the state court administrator's online system rather than going through the state police, um, system. Um, I spoke with, uh, several of those businesses within the city utilizing this, uh, process. And they indicated they are using the same exact information, their formats, their reports look the same. And so, we're receiving very valid data. We believe changing the ordinance language to simply require a statewide background check, regardless of whomever you go through, um, would resolve that issue and provide the same level of confidence in the validity of the background check. Secondly, someone from out of state currently is also required to, uh, provide a background check from the state that issued that driver's license. Presumably, um, that's to ensure that the out-of-state solicitor does not have any legal issues that could pose a threat to our citizens when they're knocking on doors and engaging them in conversation. However, we recognize if that person committed a felony, a sexual assault, a misdemeanor involving theft or other crime that would disqualify them from obtaining a Fayetteville permit, and it happened in an entirely different state, um, the city of Fayetteville would never catch it because it would never have been checked. And we would, um, be required to issue that permit because they met all those requirements. Uh, we would instead recommend that we change that language to require a nationwide crime index background check so that each person's name is run through, um, a nationwide search, including the sex offender registry. Um, we believe it's a safety issue for our citizens, and that's one of the reasons this ordinance was passed in the first place, back in twenty thirteen. Again, this type of search is run very commonly, um, by local companies and that do the statewide background checks, and they can do so again in a twenty-four-hour period. Finally, um, several of the solicitation permits that we've issued over the last two years are, uh, that we've seen are from international students on Fayetteville, uh, in Fayetteville on a student visa. Um, they cannot get a background check because they're not, uh, they don't have a state-issued ID. So, instead, utilizing Kit's, um, Kit's language in the ordinance, we would prefer that this be addressed with a nationwide background check um, and/or a copy of their visa or other government-issued ID, uh, which can be verified to check to see if there's any crimes being committed by the individual. Uh, we discussed this proposal with Alderman Tenet, the original sponsor. He indicated he was supportive of us bringing it forward, uh, for consideration by the council as a whole. Um, you all don't see emergency clauses often, and we recommended this to have an emergency clause. Uh, the reason, um, is because we believe it is a safety issue. We're coming into the spring and summer solicitation season, if you want to call it that. And we're starting to hear, um, uh, folks involved in solicitation, um, getting permits. And so, in, in order to achieve a more comprehensive background check on door-to-door solicitors, um, and for those speaking and knocking on doors for, with citizens throughout our community, we recommend this be, uh, adopted with an emergency clause, which essentially makes it go into effect immediately. I have to answer any questions?
What questions? Yes, John?
I just need clarification. When we're talking about door-to-door solicitations, we're talking about commercial solicitations, correct?
That's correct.
Not political solicitations? High vote for me.
That's correct. That, there's a, uh, there's a long, relatively long list of, um, exemptions within that. I think the Girl Scouts are included, the, you know, there's several exemptions within the existing ordinance.
Okay. And also, if there's a referendum, a petition being passed around?
That's correct.
Those would be exempt?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? What public comment do we have on this? Okay. Bring it back to the council. What's the wishes, the council?
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section one sixteen oh-two door-to-door solicitation at private residences D four of the Fayetteville Code in order to provide an improved and expedited background check process for applicants and to declare an emergency.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading?
Second.
A motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section one sixteen oh-two door-to-door solicitation at private residences D four of the Fayetteville Code in order to provide an improved and expedited background check process for applicants and to declare an emergency.
Any final comments from the council? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Latier. Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
And the emergency clause requires a separate vote.
Okay.
So, is there a motion to approve the emergency clause?
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the emergency clause. All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Latier. Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
Okay. Do I require another vote on that, all of it, or is there?
No, no, that, that was it.
Okay, that's good.
The ordinance was passed, and then the emergency clause was passed.
Thank you all. All right. Number four. An ordinance amending one seventy-eight point zero-three E and F of the Unified Development Code to remove the pre-approved sidewalk vendor locations in front of the Walton Arts Center as agreed upon in Resolution one eighteen dash oh-four and to streamline the approval process for alternative locations. Kit.
Be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal Section one seventy-eight oh-three E and F of the Unified Development Code and replaces it and enacts the language attached in Exhibit A.
Okay. Chairman?
The purpose of this ordinance amendment, uh, request is twofold. Firstly, the city currently permits sidewalk vendors in multiple locations throughout the downtown area. Some of those are predetermined and pre-approved by the city council. Those, primarily, those two locations are the wider sidewalks that we have in front of the Walton Arts Center on Dixon Street and West Avenue, and also the sidewalks on the inside of the downtown square. Um, other locations outside of those areas are reviewed on a case-by-cases through a conditional use permit that must be approved by the planning commission. In the most recent lease agreement between the city, the university, and the Walton Arts Center, a provision was added that prohibits sidewalk vendors from locating along their, uh, boundary of their campus. Um, sidewalks immediately adjacent to those premises would not be allowed through that lease agreement. Um, presumably, this is due to the redesign of the primary entry to the Walton Arts Center from Dixon West. If you'll remember, there's a grand staircase coming up from Dixon Street, um, incorporates a wider stair entry, new planters, and more interaction with the public realm. Sidewalk vendors are not permitted in locations where they interfere with stair entries or other locations, and those are normally reserved, um, for entering a building. So, this first ordinance amendment is to simply remove, um, the section that permits sidewalk vendors, um, along those areas along, along the Walton Arts Center campus. And that, that's to comply with the lease language. Second ordinance amendment request is to change the process by which sidewalk vendors can request an alternative location than those pre-approved by the city council. As I mentioned before, uh, these are currently done through the conditional use permit process, which requires a planning commission, um, approval. In order to streamline that review process, staff is proposing to remove the conditional use permit process and instead allow this as administrative review by staff, much as we already currently do with vendors on private party, uh, private property. So, essentially, this would go to a, a process that we already utilize. Um, staff would review the application, review the exact same information as the planning commission does currently, but it would streamline that process, uh, hopefully in, um, an attempt to hopefully ameliorate some of the difficulty now with removing one of our locations that were already pre-approved. Um, staff's proposed this additional amendment, um, in hopes of, uh, re, in hopes that reduction of the, of the pre-approved spaces, that the most popular sidewalk vending location, we can find other sp, spaces and quickly be able to issue those permits. We hope you support this, uh, ordinance amendment.
What questions do we have for Chairman on this? Anybody? What public comment do we have on this? Okay. Bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section one seventy-eight oh-three E and F of the Unified Development Code to remove pre-approved sidewalk vendor locations in front of the Walton Arts Center as agreed upon in Resolution one eighteen dash oh-four, and to streamline the approval process for alternative locations.
Maybe we go to the third and final reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the third and final reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
An ordinance amending Section one seventy-eight oh-three E and F of the Unified Development Code to remove pre-approved sidewalk vendor locations in front of the Walton Arts Center as agreed upon in Resolution one eleven, I mean, eleven eight, one one-eight dash oh-four and to streamline the approval process for alternative locations. I stumbled a little bit on the number there because I think that the resolution probably was done in fourteen and not two thousand and four. Um, and if we, uh, so it might be a different number of the resolutions. The resolution that did approve the Walton Arts Center lease, the twenty-five-year lease between Walton Arts Center, the university, and the city. And so, if that number is wrong, we will correct it as a Scrivener's error.
Okay. Any final comments from the council? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes.
Okay, number five. An ordinance waives requirements of formal competitive bidding and to authorize the purchase of two Kodak i forty-two-hundred scanners from the Affiliated Computer Services Incorporated, Dallas, Texas, in the total amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars plus applicable sales taxes used by the Office of the City Clerk Treasurer. Kit.
Whereas the scanners currently being used to archive documents by the Office of City Clerk Treasurer are not compatible with Windows Seven, and whereas Kodak scanners have been approved by city software vendors as being the most compatible and preferred scanner to work with, software the city already owns and uses, and the city should only purchase scanners that are recommended and approved by its software vendors. Now, therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the city council of the city of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby finds that such circumstances constitute an exceptional situation where competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the purchase of two Kodak i forty-two-hundred scanners from Affiliated Computer Services, Inc. of Dallas, Texas, in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars plus applicable sales taxes for use by the Office of the City Clerk Treasurer.
Although this is a, uh, request for the city clerk's office, actually, what it is, is a request coming from IT for compatibility, uh, with our current Windows software. Uh, as you know, these scanners are used constantly. They're what we use to historically store and retrieve data and documents that we need them. We need them to be compatible with Windows Seven. These scanners that are there are aging, and we're asking for a sole-source Kodak, uh, because that's compatible with our equipment. I'll answer any other questions. I don't know if Sondra has anything to add, but actually, this recommendation and push was from the ID Department. It was, in fact, included in the CIP for twenty fifteen.
Okay, yeah.
Uncharacteristically, I would vote for gold-plated scanners for that department. Those ladies work harder than anybody else in this city that I've ever seen in both private and public world. My hat goes off to Ms. Smith and her staff. They deserve the best equipment we can buy.
Thank you, John. What other questions do we have in the council? Any public comment on this? Okay, bring it back to the council.
Maybe we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion to second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Hedy.
Yes.
Schottmeyer.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Have a motion, second, go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Petty?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes. Okay, number six. Resolution expresses city council's intent to develop policies or ordinances to discourage the spread of invasive plant species. Chair?
Staff is requesting that the city council, uh, tonight, um, assist us in determining whether to study and develop an invasive plant species policy and or ordinance. Uh, the urban forestry advisory board has been actively discussing the subject of invasive plant species with, uh, urban forestry division and parks and recreation department for several years. They've made a couple of presentations to you annually. Um, very recently, there was one, um, to the city council at their agenda session, um, requesting that you consider the development of some sort of policy or ordinance. Um, the invasive species policy has also been discussed with the city attorney and city staff and, um, the sustainability and resilience department, who at the advice of the mayor, has brought this forward to you all, um, as a resolution, uh, to discuss or express whether or not there's consensus among you all, um, in agreement to work with other city departments, um, and divisions, as well as outside, um, experts and stakeholders within the community to develop an invasive plant species policy or ordinance. Oftentimes invasive plant species, we've found from peer cities typically contain a public education outreach, um, program, um, sometimes development of programs or materials explaining effective methods, um, of dealing with invasive, uh, plant species, sometimes adopt, adoption of policies, sometimes adoption of ordinances. Uh, we don't know what's appropriate for Fayetteville, thus the reason, uh, for the need for, um, the research. Excuse me. We anticipate the process would take several months to, uh, do the research for developing on some sort of policy to bring back to you all as a city council to ultimately make a final decision. Um, it would include a robust stakeholder input process, including city staff, horticulturists from the community, uh, commercial nurseries, um, and community organizations. And before that work is begun and before we begin reaching out to those organizations, the mayor simply wants to determine if the majority of the council supports, uh, studying and developing a policy before resources are allocated for this work. Um, there were two questions asked at the agenda session. I'm gonna let Peter Nierengarten, um, answer one. Uh, Mr. Tennant asked a question about ballpark, uh, time that would take for this type of study, um, essentially your resources. And then also, uh, Mr. Petty, uh, requested an ex- a brief explanation of what non-native, native, and invasive type species are. So I'll let Peter explain those two.
Peter?
Mayor, council, um, based on, uh, staff's experience in, uh, working on other policy development projects, which is urban agriculture and energy codes, um, Jeremy mentioned the, uh, stakeholder process that we would likely undertake, um, in developing this, uh, this policy, um, looking at peer cities, uh, other states, other counties, um, trying to evaluate what, uh, potential policies might work for Fayetteville, um, and then ultimately working on a, a, a policy recommendation and an educational component to go along with that, uh, recommended policy. Um, we envision that process taking somewhere between six and eight months, uh, hopefully having, uh, some sort of recommendation for you all around the end of the year, um, and we envision that to take, uh, somewhere between three hundred and four hundred hours of staff time to complete.
Okay, what questions do we have? Yes, John.
Peter, how many of our staff members are working on this proj- or would be, would you envision would be working on this project?
That's a good question. Um, we, uh, we anticipate, uh, two to three staff from, uh, my department, sustainability and resilience, working on this, uh, likely with input from, uh, planning, and also with input from our urban, urban forestry department and our parks and recreation department.
So, number of people? We're talking five to ten?
Uh, we would probably have, um, uh, I would say about five staff, um, that would be, um, you know, working on and off on this project. None of us would be working full-time on the project.
Mayor, I'd just like to go on record that I would like to support this proposal, but I cannot support something that would be coercive. I want something that would be educational, something that would be persuasive, but nothing that will improve, impose some sort of sanction or criminal penalty if someone plants the wrong plant in their front yard. That concerns me gravely. If we have it, if I were to go plant kudzu in my yard and it takes over my whole neighborhood, yes, I should be stopped. That's criminal. I'm trespassing. My kudzu is trespassing on someone else. But if I plant something in my front bough lid and I contain it, it's not invading anything but my own private property. I would think that's a matter for the private landowner to decide, not a group of experts or the city council. So let's educate, let's not coerce.
And that would certainly be part of our, uh, research in looking at how other communities, cities, and states have dealt with that very issue.
I'd be interested to know.
Yeah, right now, John, we're just trying to s- get a study going, and then we'll bring you what we come up with. Okay? Um, what other, oh, Ellen, I'm sorry, you had.
I do, I do have a question. I'm the last whereas statement, and I'm very supportive of this ordinance, but I do have a question about one of the people that we're going to seek input from. It says, "Commercial nurseries." Are, are facilities like Lowe's, Home Depot, Walmart, their nursery sections, would they be considered a commercial nursery or just a retailer that wouldn't be included?
No, I think they're, they're commercial. Uh, they're zoned in commercial zones, and that's a nursery, so I would think that they would certainly be ones, if they wanted to have input on this, uh, could certainly give us input.
This is certainly not intended to be any kind of exclusive list. Um, this is examples of those we would try to reach out. There are likely other industries that we would, um, landscape contractors, you know, and anyone who's involved within, um, this realm of, of, of work, we would try to get input from.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Hang on, we get public, uh, I'll get public comment in a minute, okay? What else? Anybody? Okay. Well, yes.
Uh, earlier we were talking about committees, and if we respect the time and input that we have with our committees.
This has taken hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer time from our committees that have been involved in managing invasive species across our city and developing awareness of invasive species. So, um, when I was approached to, uh, look at the information, uh, it was with a great deal of respect of the broad input that we have from individuals that have given their time, again, to be engaged in our city and to be working on our committee structure to provide this type of expertise. And I for one have a great deal of respect for that, and will look forward to, uh, the information that is supplied by these individuals, and so much respect and for the information that they've already given us throughout the past couple of years. Um, I tell you what, you know, a lot of us were raised thinking that honeysuckle was something pretty wonderful, but I have a current battle with honeysuckle that is not ending in my, my lawn right now, so.
It didn't work out so well for me either.
So anyway, thanks, thank, I, I wanna publicly thank the volunteers and the hours that they've put in on this, and let them know how much that I respect the information they've sent our way, so that we can make a good decision as we move forward, and also the city staff that will be working on this, um, as a result of the, uh, volunteer hours from these committees.
Adele?
And I want to say amen to everything that Mark said. I have just, I've been educated, and I know many other folks have been educated. I'm kinda like Mark. I grew up thinking honeysuckle was just pretty, you know, and you'd take those little flowers and so forth. Well, my husband has spent many, many hours this spring clean- cleaning the bush honeysuckle out of our woods behind our house, and, uh, his work has only just begun. So, I'm telling you, um, I would like for you to look at the, down at the YRCC, we had a reopening of the YRCC, the, uh, Southeast Arkansas Fayetteville Community Center. Huge honeysuckle. You can't see anything around, any of the beauty around that community center. All you can see is bush honeysuckle. So, it is, uh, I've, I've been truly educated about this, and I know that many of our citizens, uh, once they realize the problems that it causes, I think they would be very happy to comply. And I, I wanna say that I don't think, um, I think it's just an intent to develop a policy, and so I, I haven't heard anything about fining anyone or putting anyone in jail because they planted a honeysuckle plant or an ivy plant, but it's just simply a policy, which I think is a very responsible thing to do. Thank you.
Yes, Sarah.
I just wanna say how thankful I am to see this coming forward, and this is really badly needed, and, and it's something that, you know, an individual homeowner can have a difficult time addressing. I know I can clear all the honeysuckle off of my side of the hedge, and it's just a matter of a week before it starts coming in through, from the neighbor's property and growing back. So we clearly need a comprehensive, community-based approach, and I have a lot of faith in our staff. I know they did a great job with our urban ag ordinance to, to look at the data and really get a, a good, um, amount of input from the various stakeholders and help us to develop a really, um, effective strategy for managing this problem in our community.
Okay. Now we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Russell Black, and my family and I, uh, own and operate Westwood Gardens here in Fayetteville, as well as Springdale and Rogers. And, uh, Sue Madison called me and, and informed me of your effort here, and I, she asked if I'd be interested in participating and commenting, and I said certainly. And I would like to say from the outset that I'm, I'm very appreciative of the concern that you have shown about invasive plants, because some of the ones that are on the list are certainly invasive, and, and most of those are, almost all of them are items that we, we do not sell, and we don't intend to sell them. The Bradford pear, we do not even sell. The Bradford pear, we do sell a few. Caloriana, it's a, uh, Cleveland Select variety because it's a much stronger tree and so forth, but the regular old Bradford, we don't even make it available. Uh, some other items that are a bit of concern, English ivy, a lot of people use that in groundco- for ground cover in beds. Your comment a moment ago about if you plant it in your own yard and you can contain it, uh, you know, I don't think the city should get into a situation where they're telling people they cannot, uh, plant a certain plant if it's on their own private property. Now, you would have control over public space and, you know, public parks and those kinds of issues. Uh, the University of Arkansas, I was, obviously has considerable, uh, property here within the city, and, you know, I'm sure they have some beds of English ivy and, uh, the winter creeper eunomus. And, uh, so those kind of issues could be addressed, and you might have some control, uh, and intelligent control over that, but as far as just demanding that people cannot plant certain plants, or if they could be sold, let me speak briefly for the fact of offering for sale, uh, you know, you don't wanna limit the sale of that in Fayetteville, and then somebody could drive over to Springdale and buy the plant and drive right back into Fayetteville and plant it. So, it has to be some thought given to that. But I think we should approach it from a, an education and an understanding and a continued effort to point out the detriments of the invasive plants, and, uh, those of us at Westwood Gardens would be more than happy to and willing to participate in that whole effort and very supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Who else would like to address this?
Bob Culp, uh, resident of Ward One, and I see all these people back there with all kinds of samples of invasive plants, so I'm not gonna talk about the evils of invasive plants. Uh, they'll do it much more eloquently than I can. Uh, I just wanted to make the one point that as we go forward in, in talking about a policy, the city of Fayetteville owns quite a bit of land itself, uh, the parks department, the water and sewer department, and the city of Fayetteville also does maintenance work on rightaways, for roads, and for trails. And I think whatever we have in the policy, we should also make sure that we include a section in there or some thoughts in there about how the city of Fayetteville is going to manage invasives on their property. Um, right now, I guess there's probably not very much budget for doing something like that, and it probably doesn't need to be a large budget in the future for doing something like that, but there does need to be something. Uh, also, there's cases where you already spend money on managing invasives, but you're not doing it in a way that is, um, permanent. On rightaways, on my street, every year the city comes by and cuts down the bush honeysuckle that grows out across the street. Sometimes they'll do it twice a year. Uh, if they spend a little bit more time doing it right, one year, they might actually be able to keep it from growing back over the road for the next couple of years. It will eventually come back, because the edge of the rightaway does have sunshine, and if there's a honeysuckle bush someplace in the neighborhood, a bird will eat a berry, and he will deposit that berry on the rightaway, and it will grow back. Uh, but I think they can actually save money, um, by, you know, if they had a policy about how to go about controlling it differently than just going by and cutting it down, 'cause that just makes it come back stronger. That's the only thing I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi there, um, Jeff Hampton, nine twenty, North Levert Avenue. I am really surprised that Fayetteville does not already have something addressing this. I have not had the chance to be a homeowner up here, but I was in Fort Smith, and having to deal with invasive plants is a pain. You know, I understand to an extent that a man's home and yard is his castle, but I also understand that when that kudzu or honeysuckle or whatever awful thing is extending over into your neighbor's property, that's an issue, and that may not be something that can be sorted out on a, you know, person-to-person, stop this thing growing in my yard level. And it gets even hairier when it spreads through the entire neighborhood, such as it did where I come from. And, um, I would very much like to see this taken seriously, and I appreciate that you all have actually called in experts to sort this out. So, yes, I really hope to see something actually done about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Luca Slesch. I, um, live at two eighty South Hill Avenue. I am a biology and outdoor education teacher here in Fayetteville. Um, two years ago, when I did invasive species, I would show videos of invasive species that go all around the world. This year I took a different approach. We walked down the street from Fayetteville High School and took a block to just count the number of invasive species. We also looked at latest statistics showing that there are two hundred and ninety-seven invasive plant species in Washington County. That is the number one highest invasive plant species in Arkansas, followed by, that is forty-nine more than Pulaski County, which has two, uh, which has two hundred and forty-eight, I believe. Um, and then looking, as we walked around, I had some students bring back some samples just from their own yards, and we actually found two species that are not on that list of two hundred and ninety-seven species. And that list of two hundred and ninety-seven species was put out by the University of Georgia, um, I'm sorry, I forget the name of it, um, the ED mappings, which is Early Detection Mapping System, at seven twenty-nine AM this morning. So, and then we walk and we talk about how this is affecting everything. I mean, as a biology teacher, we talk about how everything's connected, and so we are trying on the education part, but showing our students that just somebody besides their crazy biology teacher who has everything known to man growing in his classroom, um, is concerned about this is very important. I mean, the impact of that, showing that adults care other than one person. Um, the studies that we look at just at the high school, I mean, I'm a little bit passionate about this subject. Some people say crazy, but, um, we look at the different things, like, um, we do the big water system, letting people know about, uh, things that wash into the creek. What we don't look at is, as we go down, we look at Skull Creek in my outdoor education class, and we point out invasive species that has come from somebody's yard as the seeds washed down in the rain. And so looking at the impact of this, um, is very important, because we do this in all of our sections. We talk about in ecology how things can't eat the bush honeysuckle. So how does that affect our entire ecosystem all the way up to us? And so I believe a study like this not only is important to knowing what's out there, but to showing our students and our residents how important it is to look at these factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, um, Jeff Hampton, nine twenty, North Levert Avenue. I am really surprised that Fayetteville does not already have something addressing this. I have not had the chance to be a homeowner up here, but I was in Fort Smith, and having to deal with invasive plants is a pain. You know, I understand to an extent that a man's home and yard is his castle, but I also understand that when that kudzu or honeysuckle or whatever awful thing is extending over into your neighbor's property, that's an issue, and that may not be something that can be sorted out on a, you know, person-to-person, stop this thing growing in my yard level. And it gets even hairier when it spreads through the entire neighborhood, such as it did where I come from. And, um, I would very much like to see this taken seriously, and I appreciate that you all have actually called in experts to sort this out. So, yes, I really hope to see something actually done about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Luca Slesch. I, um, live at two eighty South Hill Avenue. I am a biology and outdoor education teacher here in Fayetteville. Um, two years ago, when I did invasive species, I would show videos of invasive species that go all around the world. This year I took a different approach. We walked down the street from Fayetteville High School and took a block to just count the number of invasive species. We also looked at latest statistics showing that there are two hundred and ninety-seven invasive plant species in Washington County. That is the number one highest invasive plant species in Arkansas, followed by, that is forty-nine more than Pulaski County, which has two, uh, which has two hundred and forty-eight, I believe. Um, and then looking, as we walked around, I had some students bring back some samples just from their own yards, and we actually found two species that are not on that list of two hundred and ninety-seven species. And that list of two hundred and ninety-seven species was put out by the University of Georgia, um, I'm sorry, I forget the name of it, um, the ED mappings, which is Early Detection Mapping System, at seven twenty-nine AM this morning. So, and then we walk and we talk about how this is affecting everything. I mean, as a biology teacher, we talk about how everything's connected, and so we are trying on the education part, but showing our students that just somebody besides their crazy biology teacher who has everything known to man growing in his classroom, um, is concerned about this is very important. I mean, the impact of that, showing that adults care other than one person. Um, the studies that we look at just at the high school, I mean, I'm a little bit passionate about this subject. Some people say crazy, but, um, we look at the different things, like, um, we do the big water system, letting people know about, uh, things that wash into the creek. What we don't look at is, as we go down, we look at Skull Creek in my outdoor education class, and we point out invasive species that has come from somebody's yard as the seeds washed down in the rain. And so looking at the impact of this, um, is very important, because we do this in all of our sections. We talk about in ecology how things can't eat the bush honeysuckle. So how does that affect our entire ecosystem all the way up to us? And so I believe a study like this not only is important to knowing what's out there, but to showing our students and our residents how important it is to look at these factors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Pete. I'm Pete Heinzelman, uh, live behind Root School on Appleberry Drive, and I have a complimentary, uh, bouquet for you guys, uh, compliments of Gully Park. Can we pass this?
Sure. I'm per- I'm pretty per- per- I'm for mayor with that.
This administration, man.
We got plenty of this.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have nothing, just.
We don't want, we don't have.
I rolled it up in my pants, no, so. Okay, okay.
Well, the first question, uh, is, uh, I know, uh, we're talking about invasives, but, uh, by far, in my opinion, the worst one in Fayetteville is bush honeysuckle. Uh, so what is it?
in and around Fayetteville. As he stated, the plant was brought into this country from Asia in the late 1800s. It never existed in North America before that time, and was promoted as a hedge and ground cover. Years ago, it was actually sold at a local nursery, which probably explains why Fayetteville now has so much of it. What wasn't known then was its ability to invade and take over other areas where it was never intended to be. We are now seeing it in our urban forests, Mount Sequoia, our parks, Gully Park and others, along our streams and trails. Its dense thickets, which green up early in the spring before the leaves come out on the trees, effectively shades out the native wildflowers and tree seedlings and block our view of the special areas where our trails and parks are. It also threatens the interdependent relationships between native plants and animals that have developed over thousands of years and that have led to the incredible biodiversity that we enjoy today in our Ozark region. When monocultures of bush honeys, like bush honeysuckle, take over, that diversity goes away. Its berries, which consist mostly of sugar, do not provide a balanced and healthy diet for the, that birds need. Besides sugars, birds need the fats and proteins that the seeds and insects of native habitats provide for them, for them, and that does not occur with monocultures of bush honeysuckle." My own experience with this plant occurred on the small wooded lot next to our home, where our kids used to play. That was now 30 years ago. Since then, it has gradually filled in this wooded lot, and with, gradually, that wooded lot has been overgrown with bush honeysuckle to the point where one could not see into it or even walk in it, into it. About two years ago, we began the process of removing this invasive plant by pulling out the smaller ones and cutting the large ones at their base, painting the stumps with 20% Roundup herbicide. The stems and branches were taken to the curb, picked up by a city truck with a clamshell digger, and hauled away. The first load was free, a really good deal to get rid of a really bad actor, bush, like bush honeysuckle. We're looking forward to seeing the return of what our natural Ozark habitat has always provided, dogwoods, serviceberry, crested iris, trout lily, trillium, and many more species of native plants and animals that should be here next to our home. So, why do we need a policy in Fayetteville for bush honeysuckle and the other invasives? Well, we need it to protect our natural and native environment, because if we don't get something to protect it, it's going to go away. We need it to prevent this bush and other invasives from blocking our view of the beautiful areas in Fayetteville, like these streams. I mean, Neokaska Creek, Mud Creek, Skull Creek, you can't see them because of this And we need a policy in order to develop a program to deal with the invasives. The policy needs to be based on facts and on science, so that there will never be a credible argument that someone can make against removing these invasive plants. So, what do other states do? Well, I've been on the Internet for several, several of the other states. This is from the state of Missouri, their conservation department. It's entitled, "Curse of the Bush Honeysuckles: Kill These Alien Invaders." And they have a policy, a state policy by their state conservation department, again, that deals with that invasive plant. Here's Indiana. Has their policy. They stayed under the problem. Asian bush honeysuckles grow so densely, they shade out everything on the forest floor, often leaving nothing but bare soil, a great reduction in the food and cover available for animals and birds, essentially stopping forest succession. When the old trees die out, the new ones are not there to regenerate and continue the forest. That would happen eventually if you wait long enough, and if you don't deal with it. So, they suggested educate your community and support public policies to control the invasives. So, that's what we need to do, in my opinion. That's what other states have done. And one question that would come up is, can we afford it? I think we, we have to afford it if, and deal with it if we want to maintain the beauty and the livability of our community and keep this natural and native environment that we have. So, fortunately, we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. You gave me some. I won't plan it.
Peter Tonison. Again, I grew up in New York City, and we had, for species, we had pigeons, rats, and mudworms in the outer harbor of the city. So, when I was at Georgetown Law School, 1973 to 1976, I worked on the Endangered Species Act, and I would strongly encourage the city to do anything it can to protect us against invasive species or any loss of habitat of the species that are unique to this region. And I would strongly encourage the city to take advantage of any professionals here, some of whom have spoken, or young people who are energetic, because you don't want Fayetteville to become a place that's populated just by armadillos and Asian carp and this noxious honeysuckle. A man's home may be his castle, but I moved from New York City to Colorado, and when I lived there, the prevailing flora were ponderosa pine and prairie grasses. And I think it's obnoxious for a man to build a castle and start draining the aquifers to grow bluegrass in Colorado. If you want bluegrass, you should move to Kentucky. And I think that the city should do everything possible to protect this environment. I don't know that I would have designed Fayetteville with water moccasins, I've seen them already. I haven't seen a warthog, and I certainly wouldn't have designed it with the humidity. But I love this place for its people, but I also love it for the way God made it, and I hope the city will do everything it can to protect it. And finally, I, I would, there's been a lot of talk about education, but there are times when a government needs to do more than just educate. I was in the Division of Law Enforcement for the Fish and Wildlife Service for a couple of years, although actually, the greater threat is habitat and population, and then invasive species. I mean, you have to remember that the rock python that are threatening the Everglades now, and there are hundreds of thousands of these non-native species now destroying the native fauna in the Everglades, those originally began as private pets or the objects of private commercial endeavors, and now they're just creating havoc down there. And so, the government needs to do more than just educate. We talk about information all the time, but in the end, there are going to be some people who just have to be held to task, and there are going to have to be limits that are drawn on what people can do with their own property. And personally, and this is my final comment, the chief of police would be welcome to handcuff and strip search whoever introduced onion grass to my, to my lawn.
Good evening, Mayor, Flannan O'Neill. I, I think it's an excellent idea to adopt a policy. I applaud the effort, but I have a background in accounting and bookkeeping and business administration, so I hope you'll indulge me whenever I bring up budget repeatedly. Three to 400 hours to develop a policy that could probably be adopted and fleshed out in a lot less time because you could draw on the resources that are available from cities that have gone through this before. So, I, my only concern about this, the policy should be developed, but I don't think it needs that much time to be developed. Thank you.
My name's Don Steinkrauss. I'm a professor at the university, and I'm chair of the Urban Forestry Board. I'll keep my comments really brief. Invasive plants are invasive for a good reason. They're extremely prolific in producing seeds. They often produce chemicals which kill the other plants underneath them, and they don't have any insects usually that eat them or diseases which attack them. So, they're brought in from Asia, and they have a carte blanche to expand their range. And generally, people just don't realize how dangerous these things are for the ecosystem. So, so one of the big things is, they don't support insects. A lot of you probably don't like bugs. I'm a professor of entomology, but bugs are the basis for our food chain, for our birds and our amphibians and many other things. And they're also the basis for our attractive butterflies, which we have many of in the Ozarks, swallowtails and things. Whereas, these plants, like this is privet, which is almost equal to bush honeysuckle in its prevalence in the city, and it produces millions of berries, which the birds carry far and wide. So, we find these things far out in the forest. You cannot keep them to your property. The birds will transmit them all over the area. And this is another one which is coming in big time in Fayetteville. This is the alanthus tree, which was once called Tree of Heaven, but out east, they now call it the Tree of Hell. And this thing produces millions of winged seeds that fly everywhere in Fayetteville, and this is a coming pest for our city. It has no uses, no insects which feed on it, it's not good for lumber, it's even poisonous, and its pollen is extremely allergenic. The time to try to stop these things is now. They're going to cover up our landscape, and so I strongly support a resolution for educating the public and also looking into prohibiting eventually the sale of plants which are, which you cannot keep on your own property and are truly invasive. New York State just passed a law prohibiting the sale and distribution of about 60 species of invasive plants. These invasive plants are well-known. It's not that we're going to try to prohibit irises or forsythia, but there are plants which are well-known to be noxious to the ecosystems of our country. So, I strongly support anything the city can do to slow down and, and the spread of these invasive plants. If anybody wants to smell this, it smells bad, it's allergenic pollen, it goes everywhere. And they say the sap is actually toxic and can cause cardiac arrest, so...
Don't wave that around.
I'm Sarah Lewis. I'm resident of Fayetteville, and I'm very supportive of this, of this resolution. I think it's the right approach also, in taking the resolution approach and looking at, really researching it. I'll share a little bit about some of the importance of invasive species in aquatic ecology. My background in my research, I have conducted studies on the effects of invasive species on aquatic ecology, essentially looking at the rate of leaf decomposition in streams. So, you can imagine a stream with the trees along the side of it. In a healthy system, you have lots of different types of trees, and all those different, and plants, shrubs, flowers, whatever it may be, and all of those plants have a different kind of toughness in their leaves. And so, those leaves that are really tough, they, they decompose in the stream more slowly. Those that are really soft, decompose quickly. So, you can imagine insect larvae and crawdads and all of the, the, the bottom of the food web in the stream, they, they need food all year. So, if you have a monoculture of one type of plant in the, in the riparian zone that delivers leaves to the stream, and those leaves decompose quickly, like bush honeysuckle, you can imagine those leaves disappear early in the year, leaving fewer options late summer when, say, dragonfly larvae are still looking for food in those streams. And so, there is a potential impact at the aquatic level on the food web as well for these invasive species that affect our riparian zones in the streams. So, I'm very supportive of this, both at the terrestrial and the aquatic level and in our community, and allowing, allowing this to move forward. And I would say that it's also very important, as far as the education, to then replant with those diverse species that allow, that hold the soil in place within the riparian zone, so, and also to make sure we provide, provide the filtration of the water along the, those riparian zones as well as other kinds of food sources for aquatic ecosystems. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Very much good to see you.
I'm Kyle Smith at 2801 West Dove Drive, a member of the Environmental Action Committee. And I think the objections to this, when they come, are going to boil most, boil down mostly to private property rights. Surely, people are granted great leeway to do what they want on their own land, but that's not absolute. We have zoning regulations that keep people from building a factory in a neighborhood or a strip club next to an elementary school. These are appropriate restrictions. Not all things that people are appropriate in all places. What we do on our own property impacts the neighborhoods and the entire community around us, sometimes in ways that we don't understand, and it's appropriate to regulate those choices. But we're not to that point yet. This is all about deciding, this is not about deciding what to do, but gathering the information we need to make that decision properly. We want to make our decisions based on sound science, and that's going to require data. You may be able to contain your English ivy or cut back all of your decorative kudzu, but can we keep the birds from taking the honeysuckle seeds to a nearby field or forest and crowding out the native species there? So, maybe you can do it without needing to regulate individual plants, maybe you can't. We'll find that out after the study. A good study's going to take a little bit of time and money, so I hope that we can appropriate that, and I look forward to the debate that comes out at the other end, once we have all the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aubrey Shepherd. I have a lot of samples that I could have brought. If I knew people were going to do it, I would, but I brought a couple of books.
I've read that one. That one.
Yeah, and that, that's something that's helped us all in the city to read this book. I know several of you have, and I've given away a few to people that, you know, like you guys, who are interested in learning more. But I, and this is a book, there are several good books on wildflowers.
What's the name of that book?
This one is Arkansas Wildflowers by Don Kurtz, but there are several, and you can order them. And if you look at Ontario and Canada, and guess what? Native plants are almost the same. Many, many of them are the same, all the way across the eastern United States. So, you, you can get a New York book. I've been to, someone talked about being from New York, and there are several urban parks there where native plants are displayed and they're propagated. Anyway, I do want to defend a couple of species of honeysuckle. The bush honeysuckle, we call China honeysuckle, and it's bad. It's, I think, a lot of syrup. Mackie is a name you'll find in the book. Japanese honeysuckle is vine. We haven't been talking about it much, but 15, 20 years ago, it seemed to be a bigger problem, especially on prairie land and scattered timber areas. But bush honeysuckle has just kept growing and growing, and that's what's on the radar right now. But the Japanese... But the Japanese honeysuckle is Lonicera japonica from Japan, and it's a hideous invasive. The roots go for yards and yards and keep coming up and covering other things. In fact, on World Peach Whitman Prairie, our little neighborhood city park, there's a stand of native honeysuckle, Lonicera. I say it all the time. Anyway, it's the red flowers that look little, like little trumpets. And it's been in an area about the size of the rest of this room here, climbing on little trees and things, and the trees have grown, and it's way up 11, 12, 15 feet tall in places where that native honeysuckle grows. But every year, when it blooms in April, and it's in peak beauty right now, it gets covered up by Japanese honeysuckle. And you say, well, one of the things I think was alluded to is that Japanese honeysuckle, like the bush honeysuckle they were showing you, the China honeysuckle, it has flowering spots all up and down the stems. So, you get thousands of berries off of one small bush. But the, in the same situation, the, I'm sorry, the native honeysuckle has only flowers on the end of stems, not all the way down. So, it produces very few seeds, so it can't compete with this non-native. And it's a hideous war that goes on. I try to get people, "Look, let me show you the native honeysuckle before it gets covered up." They say, "Well, why don't we just take all this down?" I say, "Well, you have to be careful you don't take out the good with the bad." And so, that is one little area that I've never been able to clean all the Japanese honeysuckle off of that spot, because it keeps coming up, and if I cut the roots of the good honeysuckle, I'll wipe it out. But my point is that honeysuckle's not a bad word. It just happens that you need to know there are a couple of really important native species. Lonicera sempervirans is the one with the red trumpet, and Lonicera blava is a yellow version, and leaves are like this, with two leaves where it comes out. Now, in some of the city parks, we have had those. For instance, three or four years ago, I remember Gully Park had a great array of the two native honeysuckle colors out there, where, near the parking, little parking area on the west side. So, we do have the good ones here, so let's don't scare people into thinking honeysuckle's a nasty word or something, because it is one of the beauty things that we can restore if we get rid of the competing non-natives. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Interesting. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Yes, Matthew?
Well, I guess I think we've heard enough to decide that whether or not a policy should be developed and proposed formally, so I've moved, we've passed the resolution.
Second.
Any final comments, or, okay. Thank you all for the work you've done on this. Okay. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Eddie?
Yes.
Shopmire.
Yes.
Latu.
No.
Um.
Yes?
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Canyon.
Yes. Okay. Is there any announcements?
Mayor, I have a couple. First Thursday on the Square is happening this Thursday, 5:30 to 9:00. Also, this weekend, they have several public events. University of Arkansas is having graduation, graduation commencement ceremonies. There's a baseball home series, Foam Fest on Dixon Street, so we just want to welcome our visitors and congratulate those graduating from the university. And then, Monday, May 11th, the mayor's hosting his town hall meeting at St. Paul's Episcopal Church that's occurring at 7:00 PM. St. Paul's is located on East and Dixon.
Any other announcements? Everybody good? Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.